Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome everyone on YouTube and those in the audience. Today's Monday, December 18th. This is our weekly County Commissioner meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. We've been notified that our 10 o'clock agenda item has been canceled. But we can still, I think, do the rest. So I'll make a motion when you approve the agenda presented.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll get right into our action items. And these are all action items, the meeting minutes of December 11th.
Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of December 11th with the changes that were submitted.
Got a motion, I'll second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next agenda item is, we had scheduled a meeting Tuesday following Christmas on the 26th. And I would appreciate it if we can move that to Wednesday, the 27th. As I'm going to be in Caldwell that night. Don't really want to drive all the way back home.
That's good, because I am going to be in Boise also.
So I'm going to make the motion that we change the December 26th County Commissioner meeting to December 27th at regular time.
I will second that.
Moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next one, this should be in your packet, is an action item. This is the signed the Westlock contract for Valley County prosecuting attorney. And this is something that we do every year. Brian, do you want to add anything to that?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mopkin. The Westlock contract was amended when we added Arnie to the staff to add an additional subscription. So this isn't an annual renewal, just an addition of that fourth subscription for the contract. Yes, we have used this and is a piece of our ability to do legal research and do the work that we do, so.
We didn't budget 1306, did we?
Yeah, I think we were anticipating.
Oh, good, good, that was my only question.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we sign the Westlock contract for the PA's office.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything there to sign, is this it here?
You need a copy to sign.
Nope, this is the Calvary Church. I don't have the minutes for that, yeah. I think we all signed it, don't we?
Signature page is on the very last page there.
Okay, our next agenda item is a kind of a do-over on the lease with Calvary Chapel of Cascade. This gets... So many want today's date.
Is it just a change in the name out?
It was a change in...
Did you change the name yet?
Yeah, the name, and then we still got the liability thing. That's all done too, right? Okay, so I'll make the motion that we sign the amended lease agreement with Calvary Chapel of Cascade.
Before I second it, you had asked me whether YCAP was using that little room still. They are not, they're meeting at the Chamber of Commerce.
Yep, I read that.
Okay, so I'll second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Commissioner Mopkin, do you know who the point of contact is for our local... Is it still Beth?
No, I don't think it's Beth.
Longer there. I think it's just going to have to be Connie Krebs, the director. I don't think they have anybody coming up now that I know of.
There was in... Somewhere I got an email stating all that, who the contact was.
Yeah, just sometimes our office, it's the public contacting us to find out who the point of contact is, so if we could have that, that'd be appreciated.
I will send her an email and confirm that it's her or who she wants. There is Gina Graves works up there too, so she may be doing it, I don't know.
Okay, Sue, come on up. Our next agenda item, these are action items of value cancellations. We have six of them, I believe.
Well, we've got one value cancellation. Then we've got some solid waste cancellations and some Southern Valley rec district fee cancellations.
So you want to do 2309 first?
I would. So cancellation number nine for William Markham. Parcel number RP 00316-001-016H. So Christie missed this in her pile. She was supposed to remove both houses on this parcel. They were removed off the property prior to January 1st of '23. And it got stuck under something and she failed to get those removed off the rolls before the assessments went out. And she just found it, and so I'm asking that you cancel the market value on these for the structures, not for the land.
Sue, how is this working under the new legislation, 292, that just went through? Because now we're counseling or canceling all these values, but we've already given it to the tax difference.
Well, so what'll happen is the folks are always told they need to pay their first half of their taxes. You know, if there's a discrepancy, and this would be taken off of their second half. So we always advise people, you know, because of course they want to say, "Oh, can you just cancel my taxes?" Well, we can't always guarantee that that'll happen in a timely manner. And so instead of them getting penalties and interest charged, so let's say that the treasurer's office, for some reason, can't take those off until January or February, then that's why we always advise people that it would be taken off the second half of their taxes that is due in June of '24.
And then if they paid it in full, then it would come off next year's as a credit.
It would, Johanna would have the option to refund them. And I don't know what her policies are on that, but she does have that option.
Can you tell me, Sue, where this place is?
Yeah, yeah.
The reason I'm asking is, was there two residences on one lot?
Yeah. This was up in the... So 980 Uwood Street, they were very old structures, very, very, very old.
Okay, where's that?
And dilapidated.
Worn wagon.
They were in a half-moon cove subdivision.
Okay, okay.
Does that help? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so 2309, I'm requesting a value cancellation for a total of $283,027.
Mr. Chairman, do you want them all together, or do you want them separate?
That's up to you guys.
Um, I would do these... We have two that are solid waste and three that are rec district, so I would do all three of these separate.
Okay, so this one...
So for the value cancellation then. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we cancel the valuation for 2309, amount of $283,027.
I'll second that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, cancellation 23-10 is for the same property, but it's for the two solid waste fees that existed for a total of $220. This is a solid waste fee cancellation for RP 00316-001-016H.
225. I'll make the motion that we cancel the solid waste fee for... Oh, shoot, 23-10.
I'll second.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 2311?
2311 is for Amber and Matthew Cox, parcel number RP 00042-000015A. If you'll remember right, we did a cancellation, I think it was a value cancellation, because all of the improvements were removed. And now I'm just asking that the solid waste fee be removed for 2023 at $110.
I'd make that motion to cancel 23-11.
I'll second it, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, 23-12 is a Southern Valley rec district fee cancellation for Paul and Melody Castle. Parcel number MHC 0483-006-0180. The park model ended up being registered for '23, so we did a cancellation of the value. And now I'm asking for a cancellation of the Southern Valley rec district fee.
And the same on the Ingalls and the fees?
Yes.
All of there? These are all park models.
I'd make a motion to do all three.
Okay, so 23-13 for Yvonne Ingalls, parcel number MHC 0440-005-0050. I'm asking that the Southern Valley rec district fee be canceled. It was another park model that was registered for '23. And 23-14 for Fred and Patty Thies, parcel number MHC 0426-001-0110. I'm also requesting that the Southern Valley rec district fee be canceled. It was a park model that they registered for '23.
You... I'm sorry, just a quick question. You notify the rec district as soon as this is done, or is that like an annual thing of a list?
I do not... So Johanna is the one who actually has to go in and take it off. And so I'm going to guess she might give them a report.
There's... Do they get a list of what parcels are paying, or do they know? Or do they just get a budget?
They don't from us, that I know of. I'm guessing if they do get a list, it would be from the treasurer's office perhaps. But I don't, I don't know if a list exists that goes to them or not.
Okay, so I'll make the motion when you approve the Southern Valley County rec district fee cancellation for 2312, 13, and 14.
A second.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
You know, just because I don't remember. So we don't charge a solid waste fee at all on bare ground?
No.
No.
But as soon as they put a shed, anything on there...
Any improvement.
Then a solid waste fee is assessed. We just went through and audited all of those, because we have reports that we can pull up. So everything is up to date on both the rec fees and the solid waste fees.
I could see sometimes with, you know, if they have a shed and they're coming up and just parking their campers, having more waste than...
Oh, yeah.
Others that are recycling and doing...
If they have an RV hookup and that's all they have, they are assessed a solid waste fee.
Do you know, maybe, this is more a question for Doug, but do they tie to the 3% on their budget in setting these fees? Because it's a fee, it's not a tax.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mopkin, if commissioners are inclined to increase that solid waste fee more than 5%, you have to have a public hearing, as well as what we're discovering. We aren't able to set fees to collect additional money. The fees that are set have to be set to be able... That has to be the funding that actually operates the solid waste department.
Okay, but for, I'm talking about the rec district fee, the 96 bucks a year. Is that capped at 3% of budget?
Well, again, they have the ability to go above the 5% if they have a formal public hearing. So what they're setting right now, I believe, is $92 per household. If they want to do more than, you know, before I speak, I need to make sure...
It's 96.65 or 62 here.
Pardon me?
It's 96.62.
Yeah, I apologize, I don't know what to do. So when they're submitting that to us, they submit... They submit that, what they need to collect, or what they want to collect. What the assessor's office provides in Southern Valley County Recreation District is the amount of allowable parcels that are able, that are imposed that... Okay? So when they set their budget to us, they're telling us, they tell us that we are collecting on 2,900, that's roughly, don't quote me on that. I think it's pretty close to like 2,900 structures or improvements at the $96, $96 amount. The question that you're asking, if they want to increase that, I believe that if it's a... If it's a 5% increase from the previous year, they have to have a formal public hearing, which the general public has the ability to weigh.
Not sure they understand that concept, so maybe I need to get with them and talk to them about it, because when we originally set it up, 20 years ago, it was $87 the first year. And it's only up to 96, I think they might be missing out on some revenue they could be getting. But even if you want 3%, it would be way over 100 by now, so... And maybe there's board members that don't want to raise it, I don't know.
I can tell you when there's new managers that are hired on at the recreation. I have met with every new manager and have talked to them about setting their fees. So, but I can't provide them with any legal advice, right? I just provide them what has been done and encourage them to consult with their attorney.
Well, that's all we can do, but it's like a lot of these other boards are a lot of turnover. People aren't really understanding the concept. I'll try and get with them and kind of talk to them about that. They did go to a five-member board.
The rec district did?
At the rec district, they did get that done, so... And it's all based on the school district boundaries.
Oh, okay.
That's what they use, so... Okay, anything else?
No.
All right, we'll have a Merry Christmas.
All right, you guys too, thank you.
So we'll keep right on going. This next agenda item is an action item. Jeremy, come on up. This is a discussion decision and signature of the contract for new IT facilities ticketing software. And I'll just turn it over to you, Jeremy.
Good morning. So for a few years now, not a few, a couple of years, we've had a... Why I'm in the budget to move to a new ticketing system, because the one that we have now, we've kind of outgrown. And it was kind of a free thing that was started a long time ago. And it's not well-supported, and they kind of discontinued some of their stuff. So it's been something that has been in the works for a while. So we spent some time looking at what was out there, and obviously we couldn't get exactly what we wanted, because some of that stuff is pretty expensive. But we found, we believe, something that will work for us and will fit within the budget that I have, so...
So this is for the ticketing system when someone needs IT help, correct?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just making sure, we had everything covered. I would move that we approve the new contract for the IT department for ticketing software.
So it's got a... Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's got a signature block for all three. Do I have to wait for Commissioner Thompson to be back to sign it?
We'll just write excused absence on it.
Okay.
Yeah. So the old system, is this going to speed up the process, I guess is my base question? For people to get IT support? Is it going to be faster, easier to use?
We're hoping that it'll be easier to use, yes.
So we got a motion, I'll make the second, to approve the contract for new IT facilities and ticketing software. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Come on up, we'll do our part. This seems, I sign over here. I just want to make sure I'm on the right, because I've been screwing that up lately.
More than one.
Yeah, there's three.
Oh.
Jeremy, this has Ed Allen on it still, so...
Oh, yeah, this is a good catch.
Is that all of them?
Yep. Doug will have to change that, Ed Allen, and then you've got to attest.
I just did it.
Yep, thank you.
So what are you doing for Christmas? Hanging?
Yeah, I went home for Thanksgiving.
Well, that was enough, huh?
Yeah, I let him go home first.
Very good box.
Probably be plowed snow like the rest of us. That's what happens. Snow's this Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. We just work.
We need some snow.
We do, we do. We need some snow. I'm amazed how deep the ground's froze right now, it's like, wow. Be hard to dig a hole.
Yeah, it's been cold, but no snow.
Hey, you want to move on? Is this other one an action item too?
Is it on there as an action item? Because if it is, you can't...
Yeah, it kind of is a discussion decision regarding the badge access to McCall Annex.
So if you remember last Monday, I talked about I had been requested to see what it would cost to add badge access, the same as the courthouse, to the McCall Annex. And in order to do all the doors, that would be all the exterior doors that get into their hallway and all of their offices, I think it was eight or nine doors. It'd be $35,000 about. And then you had asked me to look at, what would it be to not do the offices and just do the...
Outside door.
The outside door. So that would be the back door, it would be three back door that they come into. That one that's in the foyer between there and the hallway, and then that one in the back of the old judge room, or I'm sorry, courtroom? It kind of goes in there, so it would be three. And that was $14,000. I guess the action item would be yea or nay, and we just do the three outside or all eight doors.
Well, we don't... Well, I guess we do have a lot of interior doors that are here. What's your feeling on that? Is it needed for all those offices, or can we just get away with the three?
Did you ask DeeDee and Jac?
Yeah, I did get an email from DeeDee. She sounded like she didn't necessarily care if the inside offices had keypad on them. I don't either. I mean, it would kind of be on them as to whether, I mean, like how critical it was that, you know, people couldn't get into their offices.
Do you have an opinion on this, since you were there? I mean, is it, they each share, they each have each other's keys anyway?
Yeah, I think the most...
I think if we lock out the exterior...
Yeah, exterior would be the most important for sure.
Yeah. It'd be easier than a key, and we can, I mean, just like here, we can add anybody's badge, so they could still all get into everybody's office. If we did that, at that point, I think it would just be the convenience of just a quick scan versus...
Anybody that has, the whole purpose is, we haven't changed the outside doors in a long time. So there's keys floating around the community, which is not good. So we've got to make sure that we lock the exterior, so that no one can get into the building. And I think that would be key priority. And then as people leave, we can just continue to change those outside locks or make sure we get their badge. So I would...
That's what we do here.
Yeah, just change the badge.
I would just vote to do the outside offices.
And I think so too. And if they want to come back later, maybe, and you're down the road, we can go back and do the inside.
Add those later. And then also, where to pay for it out of, because I didn't budget for this.
Okay.
What do you think?
I'm thinking of the court facilities fund.
Perfect, that's what I was thinking. We've got, what, 80, 60-some thousand in there?
I'm trying to look right now.
Okay, let's look and see what that is.
And then maybe we could just have Scott change the interior locks if they think that's important.
Is what's in the court facilities fund, and that could be used to fund this project. And that's what I would propose that the commissioners use.
And you said the three outside ones were $14,000?
Yeah, it was like 14,386 or something, I don't remember the exact number.
I'm just going to put $14,005 in.
Okay.
I'm going to... Okay, so you want to make the motion?
I will move that we go ahead and do the three outside doors at the annex at $14,500, or as needed.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. There you go.
Thank you for working on that.
Yes, thanks. Have a great Christmas.
Thanks, you too.
Oh, Doug, I didn't have put in that from the court facilities fund. Do you want...
Oh, yeah.
I will amend my motion to include that it comes from the court facilities fund.
I'll second or amend it. So our next agenda item is not for another 12 minutes, and I imagine Jeff is going to be here, so we're going to go mute and we'll see everyone back here at 9:45.